Welcome to the City Planning Commission Public Hearing. Madam Secretary, we're ready to begin.
Good morning. This is a City Planning Commission public meeting held at NYC City Planning Commission Hearing Room Lower Concourse 120 Broadway. Today is Wednesday, April 10, 2019. As a courtesy during the proceedings, we ask that you please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. All speakers should fill out a speaker's card. In addition, we ask that those providing testimony please identify yourself, limit your remarks to three minutes, and speak clearly into the microphone. I will now call the row. Chair Lago?
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Here.
Commissioner Bernie?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Here.
Commissioner Sirulo?
Here.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Here.
Commissioner Dweck?
Here.
Commissioner Edie?
Here.
Commissioner Knight?
Here.
Commissioner Levin?
Here.
Commissioner Marin?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Wednesday, March 27, 2019, and special meeting of Monday, April 8, 2019.
On the minutes, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved.
Scheduling on calendar numbers one and two, we have resolutions for adoption scheduled in Wednesday, April 24, 2019, for a public hearing to be held at NYC City Planning Commission Hearing Room Lower Concourse 120 Broadway.
On the resolutions, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the reports section on page three. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number three, CD 8 N 190271 ZAX. In the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning 5011 Waldon Avenue, Waldo Avenue. For adoption on calendar number three, Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
Calendar number three has been adopted. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number four, CD 8 N 190245 ZAX. In the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning Wave Hill Gardens, for adoption on calendar number four, Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Yes.
Calendar number five has been adopted. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers six and seven. Calendar number six, CD 1 C 190211 PQK. Calendar number seven, C 190212 PQK. In the matter of applications for the acquisition of properties concerning CD 3 Sanitation Garage. For favorable reports on calendar number six and seven, Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar number six and seven. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number eight, CD 16 C 190177 HAK. In the matter of an application for EULAB designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property concerning Bronxville North NCP. For a favorable report on calendar number eight, Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number eight. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number nine, CD 2 C 190184 HAM. In the matter of an application for EULAB designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property concerning Haven Green. For a favorable report on calendar number nine, Chair Lago?
Before I cast my vote on this, I want to note that while the plot of land that is before us is small, the matter before us is actually quite multifaceted and complex. In a neighborhood that has so few undeveloped parcels, every piece of vacant land has the potential to meet multiple and at times competing neighborhood needs. And in a neighborhood with an area median income as high as this one, the search for land on which to construct affordable housing is especially challenging. I want to acknowledge and thank the many members of the public who testified at our public hearing. Whatever their position on the application, their love for their neighborhood and their city was evident. It's a sentiment that I know is shared by the members of the commission. I also want to thank HPD and the partners that it has selected, including the nonprofits Riseborough and Habitat for Humanity, for having developed a 100% affordable senior housing project, and especially one that has a special focus on vulnerable members of the LGBTQ+ community. I'm especially pleased that about a third of the site is going to remain as publicly accessible open space. I urge HPD and the development team to work closely with the neighboring community in programming this publicly accessible open space to meet the needs of the current neighbors and also the future residents of Haven Green. And I also urge HPD and the development team, in the strongest terms possible, to extend the hours of opening beyond the nine-to-five that they had presented. Even on an early spring day like today, it's evident that those hours are far too short, and we expect to see longer hours. And with that, I vote yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
I would like to associate myself with the remarks of the chair. I vote yes.
Commissioner Bernie?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Associating with the remarks of the chair, I vote yes.
Commissioner Sirulo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
I just want to say that I was sorry to miss this hearing in person, but had a chance to see the videotape, as they say. And I do want to associate myself with the comments from the chair, and I just want to say that it's really important that the city take opportunities such as this to affirmatively further fair housing in communities where we've seen dramatic shifts racially and socio-economically. With that, I vote yes, and also call on the applicants to extend the hours for the open space.
Commissioner Dweck?
I don't know what gives me more pleasure, voting yes or associating myself with the comments. So I'll do both, and I vote yes.
Double the pleasure.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
What they all said, yes.
Commissioner Marin?
I'm recused.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number nine. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 10, CD 4 N 190205 ZRM. In the matter of an application for the zoning text amendment concerning 66 Hudson Yards Streetscape. For a favorable report on calendar number 10, Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo?
Refused.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 10. Citywide, calendar number 11, N 19020230 ZRY. In the matter of an application for a zoning text amendment concerning voids, for a favorable report as modified on calendar number 11, Chair Lago?
I'd also like to make a few comments on this proposal. I want to start by thanking the Department of City Planning, and most especially Kiyoshi Yamazaki and Frank Ruscala for their cogent analysis. We're an agency that prides ourselves on being fact-based and research-driven, and this excessive mechanical voids proposal is a good example of our approach. I also want to thank the 14 community boards in three of our boroughs who submitted thoughtful recommendations on the proposed text amendment. Next, I want to thank the commissioners. I've come to expect that during both review sessions and at the public hearings, you'll ask questions that are expert and incisive, but always with professionalism and respect. And while I've come to expect it, I should never take it for granted, so I thank you. And finally, I want to thank the numerous members of the public who testified at our public hearing and submitted written comments. We learned from them, and our discussion was clearly informed by this testimony. I want to highlight that the report that we've presented recommends that the maximum height of a mechanical void that does not count towards floor area be increased from the 25 feet, which was originally proposed by the department, to 30 feet. This is based on the testimony of the various engineers and our desire to assure that new, more energy-efficient mechanical equipment not be constrained by zoning. Further, the analysis that was done by the department shows that the excessive mechanical voids that we believe violate the intent of our current zoning aren't spaces that are a foot or two above the norm, but rather are patently unreasonably tall spaces. And finally, I want to note what is so important to the department, which is that text amendment doesn't prohibit mechanical voids of any height. This is important in a city that prides itself on both encouraging architectural expression and technological innovation. And with that, I vote yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo?
Well, as you have, Madam Chair, I would just like to acknowledge those who participated in this process alongside my colleagues here on this commission, but particularly the elected officials and the community members whose passion and concern over the future of their neighborhoods led to this application, as well as the real estate industry and the technical experts who provided important guidance on the real-life version of how construction and development work. And while I still feel somewhat uncomfortable with what has been described as an expedited timing of this review, particularly because there could have been perhaps more time to refine this proposal and understand more about its potential future impacts, and the fact that the formula proposed counts the first mechanical floor once you go beyond what is now proposed as 30 feet of mechanical space, I do recognize that there is little disagreement on any side that this is an issue ripe for tackling, and that this amended version recognizes the expert suggestions about greater space height flexibility than originally proposed, and that, while perhaps not going far enough for some, does create clearer rules for the development community and greater protections for our neighborhoods than exist today. So with that said, I vote yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
I vote yes, and I'd just like to note that it's important, as this makes its way to the council, that certainly from my perspective, the increase to 30 feet was based on expert testimony. And that'll future -- and it's potential to future-proof building code changes and so forth. So I'd just like that to be noted somewhere as it makes its way onto the council. Thank you.
Commissioner Edie?
I too would like to thank the chair, the staff, and the public for their input in this matter, and echoing the comments of the chair, I vote yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
It's important, I think, that our report acknowledges the public comment we received that the geographic area that's covered by this text amendment should be expanded, and that our report goes on to note that City Planning is -- the Department of City Planning is indeed evaluating residential buildings in areas beyond the area covered by this text. I hope that that evaluation proceeds expeditiously so that our action today can soon be followed by an application of the new text to all areas where this building practice might otherwise be likely to occur. I vote yes.
Commissioner Marin?
No.
Commissioner Ortiz?
I would also like to associate myself with comments of the chair and Commissioner Dweck. I think this is one of the most fascinating hearings I've participated in, and I think that I'd really like to thank the expert witnesses that came and spoke and informed the increase from 25 to 30 feet, and I hope that remains. Thank you.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
I too would like to thank the public, the other commissioners, and I agree with Madam Chair's comments. I was initially on the fence with this, and I did ask a few other questions in regards to the text. The way the text amendment is written, particularly Section 2316A 2i, which is in regards to predominant, and how it's going to be clarified in the text amendment, which was explained to me right before the meeting. With that said, and I think that helps, by the way, with that clarification, and I'm going to vote yes on this one.
A favorable report as modified has been adopted on calendar number 11. Borough of Queens, calendar numbers 12 and 13. Calendar number 12, CD 1 C 180530 ZMQ. Calendar number 13, N 180529 ZRQ. In the matter of application for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 47-15 34th Avenue rezoning. For a favorable report as modified on calendar number 12, and for a favorable report on calendar number 13, Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes, and I encourage the council to add MIH Option 1 to the list of options that are being considered.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
A favorable report as modified has been adopted on calendar number 12, and a favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 13. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 14, CD 2 C 190148 PCR. In the matter of an application for the site selection and acquisition of property concerning the NYPD Medical. For a favorable report on calendar number 14, Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo?
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet?
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 14. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 14. Borough of Queens, calendar number 15, CD 2 N 190036 ZRQ. A public hearing in the matter of an application for a zoning text amendment concerning Court Square, Block 3.
We're going to have a 10-minute team presentation by Dan Eggers, Nicholas Silvers, Chris Fogarty, Mike Curley, and Jay Siegel.
Good morning, Chair Lago, Commissioners. Dan Eggers, Land Use Attorney at Greenberg Charak, representing Court Square, 45th Ave. LLC, the owner of properties at 2310 to 2316 45th Avenue in Long Island City. For a zoning text amendment to change the height and setback regulations applicable to the property's block. Under current height and setback regulations, a 70-story building could be constructed as of right, while under the proposed text amendment, a 45-story building would be constructed. So a developer actually wants to make a building shorter. Both the as-of-right and proposed buildings would be 15 FAR. I'm joined by Nick Silvers of The Developer, Chris Fogarty of Fogarty Finger Architecture, Mike Curley of Phil Pabib and Associates, and my colleague Jay Siegel. Before I go on to present the application, I'll turn to Nick to say a few words.
Hi, Nick Silvers from The Developer, Tavros Holdings. First and foremost, thank you very much for the time this morning. We certainly appreciate everything that you do for the city. As born and raised New Yorkers, we are always trying to find projects where we can really add value to the city and be able to give back to the city that will have lasting effects. And from our perspective, this text amendment change to be able to reduce the height from 700-plus feet to 500-plus feet is really well-intentioned to try to be responsible to our neighbors, to the community, and to the city at large, and we thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Nick. Property is in a C-53 district and a special Long Island City mixed-use district. It is in the Court Square sub-district, and in particular, it is on Block 3 of the sub-district. The development site comprises the seven lots outlined in red, having approximately 11,000 square feet of lot area. The green lots on the east end of the block are development rights parcels, from which approximately 90,000 square feet of development rights will be transferred as of right. The black dashed outlined area shows the area within 60 feet of 23rd Street, where there's an 85-foot building height limit, which is one of the regulations the text amendment seeks to change. Here is a view of the block and the site. Each of the seven tax lots comprising the development site is improved with a three-story building. As mentioned, 15 FAR is permitted as of right. This is because for zoning lots over 10,000 square feet with more than 70,000 square feet of floor area in the Court Square sub-district, 15 FAR is permitted with a certification from the chair that a subway improvement will be constructed in accordance with the special districts' regulations. So a 15 FAR building containing approximately 256,000 square feet of floor area is permitted as of right on the development site. The zoning text amendment seeks to change the building's configuration to make it shorter, which I will show you now. The building on the left is the building that can be constructed as of right. It is 70 stories, 716 feet tall. The typical tower floor plate is about 3,400 square feet. The height and skinniness is a function of the existing height and setback regulations, which the text amendment seeks to change. Building on the right is the building that would be constructed under the proposed text amendment. It would be 45 stories, 524 feet tall, and have tower floor plates of approximately 6,300 square feet. It would have the same floor area as the as-of-right building. What we're doing is shifting floor area from the tower to the base and making the tower wider. Our clients would prefer to build this shorter building because floor layouts would be better, and it would be a more efficient building. This slide shows the existing height and setback regulations and the proposed changes and the effects on the building's floor plates. First, the 85-foot height limit I mentioned before, within 60 feet of 23rd Street, is replaced with a maximum 125-foot height limit, at which height the building would set back 20 feet. We note that the 125-foot base height is less than the 150-foot base height found in other R-10 equivalent districts in Long Island City and elsewhere, and the 20-foot setback is more than the 10-foot setback that's often required from wide streets such as 23rd Street. Second, on 45th Avenue, which is a narrow street, the 85-foot maximum base height is maintained. However, under current regulations, the underlying tower encroachment provisions apply, which would result in a setback of 20 to 30 feet. And you can see the diagonal odd configuration on the left. Here, the text amendment would instead apply just the underlying 15-foot required minimum setback. The building would have ground floor retail, office uses on 2 to 8, so seven stories of office use and apartments above. This slide shows the improved layouts of the residential tower floors. And this slide shows the layouts of the commercial floors. And here is a contextual massing showing the 70-story as-of-right building on the left and the proposed 45-story building on the right. You see the 45-story building relates better to the proposed Toyoko building on the same And lastly, here is another contextual massing, the 70-story as-of-right on the left and the 45-story proposed on the right. And thank you, and we welcome any questions.
Questions from the commission. Commissioner Dweck?
Thank you. Can you go back to the slide with the transfer of air rights of 90,000 square feet? And the transfer is from the green?
Yes.
And is that -- what is currently there, and is that all the air rights available?
Those are all the air rights available from those lots. They're currently approved with a commercial building.
How many stories?
It's --
Three.
It's three stories, and it's 15,000 square feet.
So they won't be able to build on --
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bernie?
Do you have a street-level plan?
Not as part of this set, no.
Do you provide a street-level plan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner De La Ous?
Can you go back to your slide that has the site plan on it? The side-by-side? Yeah, that's a very helpful slide. If you could also provide that, that would be helpful. And I think you cited examples of how the modification you're proposing is in line with other areas in Long Island City. Is that right? If you could --
Yes.
Could you just repeat that part of your testimony?
Sure. For instance, in Queens Plaza, there's 150-foot maximum base height. And here, what we're proposing to do on 23rd Street is increase the base height from 85 to 125 feet. So what we're saying is that in other places in Long Island City, base height is even taller than what is being proposed here.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chairman Knuckles?
I'm just curious, what will your -- what would be the dimension of your mechanical voids?
Good answer. My name's Chris Fogarty. There aren't any. There's just a rooftop mechanical space.
So your architectural expression was not constrained. Commissioner Levin?
Yeah, actually, I have a zoning question and a question about the community board's recommendation. Presumably, the zoning -- one aspect of the text requiring the setback from the elevated subway was intentional at the time to insulate the residential tenants from noise from the disturbance from the subway. Why should we not worry about that at this point?
So...
Were they wrong to be concerned, or has the world changed?
Well, the answer is that the regulations contemplated development, and this is what I'm told by departments, have contemplated development of the block sort of as one project. And here, there's the Toyoko development and then these other lots. And in fact, when the Toyoko development came along about a decade ago, a text amendment had to be introduced in order to divide up the subway improvements to account for multiple developments on this block. So what's happened is when you apply these regulations to this site, which is oddly configured, the result is the really tall skinny tower that we're trying to avoid. In terms of the effect from the subway, what's happening here is that while the 60-foot setback is being reduced to 20 feet, the base height is increasing from 85 feet to 125 feet. So while there's less distance horizontally, there's actually more distance vertically from the subway because the residential floors are starting higher than they could otherwise. I mean...
Okay, makes sense. Actually, but that then begs the question, what's the -- what was the text amendment that the Toyota -- I can't even say the name.
Toyoko.
Not sure exactly how much space they will need, but they currently earn 3,500.
Okay. And if that doesn't work out, what kind of retail are you, oh, all right.
Let me just, Jay Siegel...
Your protector is here.
Let me just expand.[1360.91]